Okay, welcome everyone to the January twenty-third somewhat delayed. Select Board meeting. Roll call. Shit sit here. Scotty Allen.
Kathy Allen here.
And Manstrek is here. Uh, would you join me, plugging agents please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to its representative representative states, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I almost stopped at the comment.
Look at the, look at the cadence, right?
Yeah, get it right. Only stop at comments. Review of the agenda, any questions about the agenda, any concerns about the agenda? Very good. What's one of your line points nominated for approval?
I want to approve the agenda for the senior.
Second.
And all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Have a comment? You have any comments you'd like to make? Anyone in the audience? We have one person in our audience, brave soul that is, thank you for coming, appreciate it.
If you're participating virtually, you can press star six or raise your hand, wait to be recognized by the chair. Just staff members with us tonight online, looks like.
Okay, anyone who's on telephone? Can press star six. Wait till you're recognized. I don't see any of that activity either.
Nor do I.
Very good. Um, school board, yes, and it's not here. They were supposed to have had a meeting last Tuesday, but when I got there, there was no one there, so I don't know what they did. Tell you about that. Consent agenda. Any questions or concerns about the consent agenda?
Just, maybe, I don't think we even need to remove it, but just, there was an edit on the, uh, January tenth, on page seven, there was a sentence that was, it just ended in the middle part. There are articles to them.
We have a move, yeah, motion, motion to accept the consent agenda.
I second it.
And all in favor? Okay, I think we did it. Okay. Questions? Any appointments that we have to address, I think, um? Mr. Geiger, you're on.
Great, and thank you, the January work anniversary, as we read through at the last meeting, uh, there's still included in your packet, the town meeting, uh, information, so what you have in your packet is a, uh, schedule for warrant article introductions, uh, so especially for Rob and Joyce, um, first time for sitting at the table for deliberative session, uh, so that schedule, uh, is what the moderator will follow, uh, basically the order of events. Um, the select board will all sit at the front table, uh, with myself, and the, uh, when the moderator goes through the warrant articles, uh, they'll be introduced first by one of us. I'll introduce the budget in the TIP district, and then I've assigned, uh, warrant articles for each of you, uh, to introduce. And so in your printed packet, uh, you also have a copy of each slide with the details that you'll present. Uh, so get them to you ahead of time, so you can review the details, let me know if you have questions, uh, or if you'd like to add to it at all. Uh, and so you'll give that brief introduction, uh, of the warrant article. At the opening, some of the articles, there may also be other presentations, uh, though I assume that the library trustees will want to present on the Library Capital Reserve. I know the Energy Committee Chair, uh, wants to say a few brief words about the Energy Capital Reserve, and so that will happen after the introduction by the slide board.
Okay, so, uh, just a point of clarification, so like in that regard, I don't need to say too much about it because.
Probably, yeah, I mean, so the talking points that you have, that's just the PowerPoint slides, and that's what will be up on the screen. Uh, you can, uh, elaborate on as little or as much of that as you want, uh, that's up to you. Uh, and, yeah, I don't know, because none of the initiatives are really big, I don't know that the, uh, like the trustees, for example, will do any more than just be able to answer questions.
And then, and then Ron will then open it up for, for everyone else to discuss, we get, we get a first shot, but anyone else, and he'll have his rules on who speaks for how long, rather than who speaks for how long. The usual, the usual rules apply, who presents the zoning articles?
So, the, uh, zoning articles usually don't have a big role at deliberative session, simply because they can't be amended. And so what, um, what Ron has done in the past, and I expect that he is interested in doing again, is having them at the end of the session, um, for information purposes only, so that they can be presented, discussed, and people know that they can't make changes, but if somebody doesn't want to stick around for that, they can get done with the business session and go home. Uh, and last year, um, hopefully, it will be more engaging than last year, last year, there weren't any questions, there wasn't really any discussion, it was, you know, just went through them and, you know, here's, here's what they are. But, again, the, they can't be changed like all of the other articles can, and so maybe that's a reason people don't spend a lot of time on them there.
And there are the, um, petitioner will present the petitioned articles. We won't, we won't be, uh, we can comment on them, I think.
Yes, yep, no question.
And they can be modified as well, I believe.
They can.
Yes, we don't have to vote on those, like we did the other.
You will take a recommendation vote after deliberative session on any article that changed and for the petitioned articles.
So that would be the time.
Yeah, but there will the legislative body make those, make those changes.
Yes.
Legislative body being everyone, citizens of, of town.
But, I think, but my, let me just clarify, so we will take a vote as to what we think of the petition warrant articles, that that will appear on the ballot?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, but we'll do that after the discussions.
Yeah, after deliberative session closes, immediately following, uh, we pre-schedule a select board meeting and Advisory Budget Committee meeting, and the purpose of that is to update recommendation votes on any article that has changed. And in this case, we know there will be four that we need to record votes for the select board on, uh, being the four petitioned articles, whether they change or not, because you haven't recorded that vote yet.
Questions? Very good. Ms. Scott?
I have nothing yet.
Well. What did they, all right. Hold business.
Am I allowed to ask a question?
Yeah, oh, well, go ahead, there's public sessions, but.
Here, there was a subject of articles. Am I okay now?
Sure.
Uh. My name is Morgan Carter, I'm the pilot of free Barrington answer. What are the four petition warrant articles and where can I find them?
They're on the town's website, so if you go to www.barrington.nh.gov/2023warrant, uh, scroll to the bottom, you'll see the, uh, language of the four petitioned articles and a link to the petition with all of the signatures. Uh, and so they were certified last week by the supervisors, uh, to have the required number of signatures added to the warrant, uh, and so that's where you can find them. Uh, what are they, one relates to, uh, adopting a code of ethics for non-employee, uh, members of town government. Uh, one relates to a duty to inform law enforcement of gun violence against children. One relates to, um, the right to place political signs on public and private property year-round, and the final relates to.
Uh, the, the, um, I'll get it out, open up the lawsuits.
Oh, yeah.
Posting all the lawsuits down forever against the city or for the city is placed against others.
On the website, so that's a subject matter there, but you can read the text on the town's website.
And we, the people of Barrington, we can vote on those, right?
So a deliberative session, so there, yes, the, you will vote on them, there are two opportunities, uh, the first, a deliberative session, so the deliberative session allows, uh, the people of Barrington, uh, to amend any warrant article, except zoning. Um, so they could be amended at the deliberative session, and then whatever the result of deliberative session for the entire warrant, each one of those articles will be voted on by the people of Barrington on the ballot in March.
Okay.
Good questions.
Dan Evans, thank you.
I didn't get that out there for everyone.
Yeah, it kind of suspended the rule there for for this particular, all right, um. We, we agree with the, understand our vision, I have not modified directly the draft proposal for the introductory sentence or the introduction that I'm supposed to give. Um, so, uh, any feedback or any alterations?
Nobody else has that.
No one else has?
No, I just gave it to you.
Oh, I thought you told it.
Um, she saw the town report write-up.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
It's, there, there's similar comments.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's just a distilled version, but I mean, it's yours, you, you can make it yours, edit as you will, I just didn't want you to have to start from scratch.
No, I appreciate that, we talked, um, did anyone have anything they want to include in that, based what, you know, at your convenience? Okay, new business. Um, this, I think, is really a good idea. Uh, informing people what the warrants, how to get, how to get to the warrant without having to send a whole package out to everyone down. Connor and I talked about this a little bit, um. Any, any questions about that, or do you want to, you want to elaborate further?
I don't need to, um, the voter guide is something probably the most common piece of feedback I've heard from voters standing at the voting booth, Barrington hasn't done it for a number of years. Uh, I think short of sending a packet to everybody, we could, uh, capture a pretty good audience by sending just a simple postcard that informs voters, uh, of the vote, where to find information, we could direct them to the website or have them come to the town hall, the library, et cetera, to pick up printed packets of what would be a voter guide. Uh, the information already exists, we build it on that warrant webpage, um, so we can spend some money to, to point people in that direction.
Yeah, I would guess probably cost less than seventy-nine hundred dollars, eighteen hundred dollars, do we need to, do we need to appropriate that money, or?
No, um, I would use either the advertising line and executive, uh, or the incident fund, uh, depending on other utilization for, for those lines.
Any questions?
Um, I put a QR code, it'd be helpful to.
Absolutely, yes, get, get right to the warrant webpage. And we'll feature the, a couple of the big articles, um, the budget, the TIP district probably make mention that there's zoning articles on there, uh, but the primary purpose will obviously be getting people informed about the vote, um, it'll obviously be objective, it has to be, uh, or, uh, to avoid electioneering concerns, uh, so I'll make sure to send draft around, uh, get it, the target will be to go out probably two weeks before the vote in March, so, yeah, sometime the first week of March.
Um, perhaps some language around as to people.
Great suggestion.
Mine, I'll go out a little earlier. Well, might suggest we go out a little early, and then two weeks out, I know it'd be two weeks ago. Probably that sweet spot for those people involved, but for evolving, we've got absentee nine feet of a little more time in two weeks. Think about that, we'll have another meeting for then.
I can talk to the town clerk also and get her recommendation, uh, for timing, uh, to make sure.
I do. Yeah, we have a little time.
Right, yeah, there, the town meeting vote can't be any later in March, so.
Okay, road naming request, they don't have, they don't have a chance to read that about the uh, request to change the name, Bushnell Lane, it was Sargent Way.
I thought it was a wonderful idea.
Good idea, because, again, we we have to.
Do with any of us.
Yeah, all, all agents, people on the road that have changed their address, which be kind of a pain. We've got to solicit the, the feedback to the, to the residents, right, to see, yeah.
It's appreciated.
Yeah, that was my suggestion, uh, allow residents to anonymously either support or oppose, uh, the, the change, and then obviously the select board would have to reconcile that feedback, uh, to make a decision.
It's a right headline on the people.
Uh, so it is, no, no, just, um, looking for direction from the select board that that's the next step, I wasn't going to send out the letters if the select board didn't want to proceed at all.
I think that's re, I think that's reasonable request, reasonable thing to do. Changing addresses, uh, can be a difficult thing, I think, I doubt if anyone, as opposed to honoring Sergeant Cheryl, is this, is this the appropriate way to do that? Would be good to have anonymous, I think. Response to them.
That's if it doesn't follow through, then perhaps we entertain a little further ways to do the same.
Agree with that.
So we'll probably plan to bring it back, maybe the, the second meeting in February, give, uh, residents plenty of time to respond, uh, and, and ask any clarifying questions or anything like that, uh, but it'll be back before the board with the results of that.
Okay, the, uh, school has asked us to share the cost of their demographic study, I think they mentioned this last meeting I attended. Information might be, some of the information may be of use to us, but I'm not sure these thousand dollars were stuff they're going to do, anybody, all out of the same pockets.
Are you know? Have we done similar studies? You pertaining to estimates for, you know, tax revenue or the other demographics?
We generally rely on the data provided by the state, they do a community profile, that's where numbers like the median income, the average age, um, then the demographic data that they extrapolate from the, uh, census data, they update annually, uh, and so we've always relied on that data. The, the town, um, in the pursuit of like impact fees, for example, uh, they'll drill in specifically to a service area, uh, to do, perform calculations that are required in order to establish an impact fee. Uh, so we've done some work like that, most recently for the school, which was, you know, uh, in, in a similar scope as this, uh, but no, the town has not traditionally paid separately for demographic studies.
Seems like the Stratford County Regional Play presentation that was at the listening session, or had a lot of great demographics in.
That's all from the state.
Yeah.
That community profile.
I don't, I don't know, do, do you see it beneficial for what you're doing to have this on top of that, or?
So I suspect that we would have access to the data regardless, um, I, I think the, uh, if there's benefit to be derived from the data, absolutely would look for that, uh, but I, I don't think the question is necessarily, will we have access to the data or not? Uh, because it's public information, the school is paying for it, like Dan had said, it's the same pocketbook, I think the question is whether or not the town will pay for half of the, the data. I included the scope, the scope is obviously very heavily focused on demographic data for the purposes of school decision-making, uh, which isn't entirely dissimilar than the data that the, the town would use to make decisions. Uh, but, uh, you know, it's not tailored to law enforcement and has this, uh, you know, analysis of as this, uh, population group grows in Barrington, these services are going to grow with it, things like that, which you would see if you were to pay for a municipal demographic study.
Doesn't sound like we have a lot to gain.
It seems like, like the town, the municipal budget has been a lot tighter in, in that we've had to absorb things like people to shovel our walkway and all these, these other unexpected expenses that maybe perhaps were shared before, but like, um, I, I think, um, it's kind of made our budget tighter.
Yeah, my, my sense is that it's been really focused on how many kids are coming up, I'm not sure that is additional information that would help us make decisions. I mean, the rest of it, I think we already have much of the median income, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, coming from other sources, I'm not sure it's particularly helpful in and of itself for us.
And I would certainly suggest we're, uh, pursuing a grant to update our housing chapter to the master plan next year, uh, that type of data could be very useful for the housing master plan chapter update. Uh, and again, I don't think the question is whether or not that data will be available, we've, um, shared data with the, um, uh, school board and the school department before, relative to the housing stock that, uh, developers are proposing and, and receiving approval for. And so I, I don't necessarily think the question is whether we'd have access to that data, I would certainly point the, uh, housing master plan chapter steering committee to that data so they can incorporate it, to consult.
I guess I would also add that we've been looking as a board to have better synergy with the school board, right, and so, you know, kind of whether it be an olive branch or showing that, you know, we, we are here together and working together, this could be a way to do that and kind of set an example of what we think the town and school board should do together.
I think that's a very good point. We, uh, we have a lot of trouble getting them to join us and everything else, so maybe if we join them, they would be reciprocated more, more amenable to sharing with us. It's not a huge sum of money. It is in my bank book, but it's not the town's bank book, I mean, thirty two fifty, I think, would be something like that, three, three fifty, which line would it come from?
Probably the incident fund.
Incident of all places.
I've got some, uh, two minds about this.
Mine too, yeah.
It doesn't seem like it's particularly data that will strongly help us, uh, in planning.
Except for next year's revision of the master plan chapter.
Which, who will have access to?
Right, they have access, I don't think there's a question of access, whether we, we can see if the information is useful.
So I think, I think it boils down to do we want to, um, use this as kind of an olive branch to the the, um, school board?
Less inclined, but, uh, like you mentioned, an orange line, and that personally. I mean, you know, my philosophy to you is, I mean, yeah, as much as we do separate out municipal and, and school, I mean, it is all Barrington, so I think this, I don't, but it's kind of come out of the same, same pocket, at the end of the day, it's, it's the taxpayer.
Right.
Of course, these initiatives, and it has to get done, so, and it's going to be taxpayers are going to pay six thousand five hundred and twenty dollars for this thing, regardless of who writes the check.
All right, so then I'm going to move that, uh, the town may have it.
Oh, second. Favor?
Uh, sorry.
Hi, I take that. Both chose. Question? I think that, I have another issue, but, uh, I think we've discussed it, okay. Speed limit reduction requests for Mike Point, I think you may have a chance to read the, the, uh, email request, um, there is a concern that, uh, you can alter the speed limit, but I think the limit is twenty-five or twenty-nine, I think, we need the traffic study.
It cannot, the speed limit cannot by statute be reduced any lower than twenty-five, it's currently set at thirty. And to lower it from thirty to twenty-five would require an engineering or traffic study, and that's required by statute.
Uh, and so one of my questions was, have there been complaints from other residents as well?
Not systematically. I mean, people complain that people drive too fast everywhere in town, uh, but there hasn't been a, uh, an abnormal number of complaints from my point.
Are there other roads that we've reduced to twenty-five?
No.
There's no precedent to do that.
Correct.
Complaints on Long County Street, on, up at Smoke Street, complaints occasionally of people driving too fast up Smoke Street. What does Chief Joy, has he weighed in on a safety perspective as far as, is it appropriate speed or not?
Yeah, so, uh, the, the end of the day, the problem is driver behavior, um, right, if, if the speed limit's twenty-five instead of thirty, are people going to drive slower, probably not, um, they do targeted enforcement, um, they have a, uh, a black box radar device that they deploy out to roads in town, which records the objective data of how fast people are driving, uh, and they make law enforcement decisions based on where the data shows that there's, you know, unsafe driving habits and, and things like that, um, so that, to answer your questions, I didn't get the sense that he felt like reducing the speed limit by five miles an hour would, uh, result in, uh, a dramatic change in driver behavior.
Have they sent the black box out there, I wonder, on Mike Point?
I don't know, I could ask.
I think that might be worth. I think that may be a start, if people are really driving crazy, then I think if everyone's driving forty miles an hour down the road, then we may want to consider doing something, if it's people driving thirty-five, who knows?
And I think part of the problem is, I mean, I live on a, a dead-end town road and the speed limit's thirty, and, yeah, people drive thirty miles an hour, thirty miles an hour feels too fast, right, because you want to be out there walking. Uh, the, the trouble is the constraints of state law, unless you're in an urban compact, you can't reduce a public speed limit, uh, lower than twenty-five miles an hour. And so, again, I think the unfortunate, uh, reality is, the question is, do you go through that effort and spend the time and money to reduce the speed limit by five miles an hour? Or do you focus energy on, you know, the, you know, maybe Barrington needs a, a speed control trailer that can go be moved to different parts of town that flashes out if people are driving too fast, or or everybody should just be good neighbors and drive responsibly everywhere, that would be ideal.
I've seen those signs of the flashing, they're going too bad, too fast, but those seem pretty effective, what about, you know, adding other, you know, extra signage, like blind driveway, children at play, you know, some of these kinds of?
That's a good, good question.
Either, you know, any proven deterrence to speeding?
So what I'm hearing is collect some data.
Yeah.
Uh, and, and let law enforcement, public safety, highway department, uh, you know, make informed decisions on use of their resources for speed control.
Yeah, correct.
And I would love to hear from more residents on Mike Point Road, I mean, we have one, uh, complaint, we probably make our decision easier, we knew what other people, the others thought.
And it? All right, we will need to vote on this, uh, Transfer Stations and Cycling Center Review Committee has suggested raising the price of the green trash bags would be the first time since first time in this century.
A millennia.
Right, raised would raise price, um, and this was pretty middle, middle um, suggestions for nine to twelve for the small bags, fourteen to seventeen for bigger bags.
So that, that budget's already in, so would excess revenue go to fund balance or go back to the transfer station?
Okay. Sorry.
No, yeah, so, um, in twenty-twenty-three, so how, um, how revenue, uh, budgeting revenue works is you have two, uh, slices, uh, first, when the budget is set, which is what we do now, that is set, you have the opportunity to update that, uh, estimate in the beginning of September, prior to the tax rate being set. And so, um, the revenue number for the transfer station, if this were included, would be updated in September to reflect the, you know, updated estimate of, of revenue. Uh, and the impact that would have is right now, we've budgeted certain operating budget, a certain amount of revenue, and we've calculated the difference, and that's what we've based the estimated tax rate impact on. If we collect more revenue and, in September, we say, oh, look, motor vehicle registration's rebounded, and we have this new transfer station revenue, uh, that will simply reduce the impact, the tax rate impact of the approved registrations. Um, so it would have an impact on the tax rate in twenty-twenty-three. Moving forward, with, it's too late in the game this time around, but you'll remember that I suggested as an alternative to accepting the extension with waste management, uh, pursuing something like a special revenue fund or revolving fund for the transfer station, and using, setting a benchmark of revenue, if it's a hundred and thirty thousand, or maybe whatever we budgeted for, for revenue right now. It's a benchmark. So the first 130,000 that we collect goes to the general fund, buys down the tax rate. Perfect. But the surplus above and beyond that is set aside in a revolving fund so that we can build that account up so that when we have a spike in our costs in 2027, we can spend down from that and, and kind of meter out the, the impact. So we don't have a $300,000 impact at one year. So again, it's too late to do that this year. So the revenue, if approved, would help us in 2023 at the tax rate. But in 2024, I recommend a revolving fund. So that impact would be felt farther.
Sounds good. Okay.
I move that we approve a request from the transfer station to implement a price increase on town trash bags. So.
All those in favor?
I, I guess we all got a bargain for 21 years.
That is, yeah, take it where we can.
And I think so, I would expect this, like board members, staff and the community will have questions about this. Certainly complaints that the prices are going up 33%. I think some of the, the important things, talking points in, in talking to residents, certainly that the bag prices haven't gone up since 1998 and the, the hauling and tonnage fees have increased dramatically over that time period. But the other thing is the Barrington transfer station model as a pay as you throw model, he is primarily funded from user fees. In 2022, I think it was almost 70% of the operations of that facility was funded from user fees. And what that does for residents is that gives residents the opportunity to say, I'm going to take, I'm going to pay for private trash pickup. And if they make that decision, not a lot of their taxes are going to fund the facility that they're not using. Then maybe they bring their recycling there. Maybe they bring a mattress or a fridge there when they have it and, and they pay for that. But that model of pay as you throw means that those fees should offset most of the cost. And that's how the model has worked in Barrington. And this correct, this increase in bag prices will further help that model. So it pays you throw residents that don't use the facility aren't paying for it or aren't paying for much of it. Residents that are using the facility are paying for it. And so just some type of points to consider because I expect residents to be concerned with that price increase.
Maybe we should target like a, a more regular revisit of the prices so that they can be incremented more regularly and so we don't have to have a less bigger jump. My own experience from, from, so.
Right. And so we talked about that a little bit. Where the sweet spot is and the, the comparison was like to forever stamps, right? So part of the problem is the supply chain of the bags. And one of the reasons that this was proposed to go into effect tomorrow is because if we said, hey, effective April 1st, the bag prices are going to be 33% higher. There'd be no trash bags between now and April 1st and then nobody would have access to trash bags. And so if, if we did get into a pattern of doing it more regularly, you know, our people, there's only those that could buy a bunch of, you know, forever stamps when they're, before they go up to 63 cents or around next one. It's a good point. The transfer station, fortunately, the transfer station committee talks about all those things and, and consideration. The, the one directive that, that I have passed along that I'd like to see to make sure that we make policy decisions consistent with a goal is establishing a, a goal for revenue to expenditures in the facility as a target. Whether it's 50%, like I said, we're close to 70% in 2022. Is it 75% or is it 100%? We'd like to get to 100%. And that gives a basis every year to look at revenue expenditures and look at the budget for revenue expenditures the next year. And say, do we need to make any corrections in our user fees or our utilization or our bag prices? And so I, I know the, the committee, among other things, is, is concerned. But thank you. And, and certainly don't hesitate to send residents our way. If they do have questions or concerns, you can address.
Okay. Ask Barrington.
Yes. Ask Barrington. The new name, the new name, Ask Barrington.
Okay. You had a chance to look at the draft select board annual report? Any questions, concerns? Again, that doesn't have to be done until, well, we have to have a little longer session. So we need some.
It's very thorough.
Yeah.
It's long, but you all have done a lot.
It's, yeah, like there's a busy year.
So if you have suggestions for anyone.
Okay.
Okay. What role is that?
Select board member reports some concerns.
Uh, let's see. We did not meet planning board, I think, since our last self work. So I have nothing to repoint.
Energy committee met last week. They're continuing to discuss a lot about the website and how we want to use the website for education and for resources for the citizens. And the other area that has taken a lot of discussion is the community power aggregate options for the town. And they're, they're really trying to beat through and get all the questions answered around that so that they can have a, a presentation for the select board on what that might look like. So that those are the two major focuses that's happening in that community right now.
And just there is a, a session on community power tomorrow night that you can attend that soon, not through our town.
Yeah, right. Yeah, we're going to see a lot of it around the state in the next year or two.
Jim's not here. George isn't here. Saw the transfer station, you know, what the ABC said. School board didn't weren't meeting where I wanted them, wherever they were supposed to be. That's kind of my report.
I'll just do real quick on zoning board and recreation, just because I, I know those are items of interest for most of the zoning board net reviewed four cases. One case was for isolated mixed use on Ham Road. They have a barn. They wanted to add an apartment. They ended up withdrawing their application. I think they were taken aback by the concern that their neighbors had. And so they, they withdrew their application for that one. There was a set of variances on Young Road for a, I think it's a 23 block conservation subdivision. This is a great example of the kind of the different role the different boards play. So the zoning board's role is, is to look and look at the five criteria and understand what is the alternative and how is this better or worse? And I think a lot of neighbors had concerns with the development and the impact it would have to the wetlands and, and all the rest. What the zoning board ended up doing in approving the variance and special exception requests with that application is they said, look, this, this development, we're not going to stop this development. What the developer's proposing as a conservation subdivision is to bring the lots closer to the road, conserve more of the wetlands in the back. And in order to do so, needed variances from, for a couple of the lots for the front setback, which increases to 100 feet if you do a conservation subdivision and something to the, the driveway access. And so the zoning board ended up approving the, the requests. So that project will move forward to the planning board and the, the planning board will consider that application at the next step. There was also a variance request on Malago Road for the subdivision down in the old Gupton pit. They're also doing conservation subdivision, but had two traditional lots. And because they're doing, because of the way that they're using the property in that way, they technically needed a variance in order to have two traditional lots, which seems a little bit redundant. But if you dig into the weeds, it all makes sense. And that was approved and the fourth one is escaping me. Vanessa, I don't know if probably wasn't significant. Oh, yes. Thank you. There was a, actually, you know, the resident on McDaniel Shore Drive, Brian Byrd Moser had a request for a plastics private road agreement. And he had a pedestal mounted solar array that needed to be moved. So there was less of a setback based on the, the construction ones. Okay. And then recreation, the big thing on recreation is summer camp and before and after care, school care registration. So this is big to do in Barrington every year. The recreation department at Jesse's leadership has optimized the process tremendously to allow folks to be able to sign up and, you know, not spend a day waiting in line and, you know, not being concerned. And so or being concerned with how the process will go. So summer camp registration will be Tuesday, that will open Tuesday, February 14th. And before and after care will open on March 11th. And so the information is all on the recreation department's website. If you have questions, they're the best ones to ask those questions of.
So could we go back to that ZBA? I heard some complaints from residents that they couldn't hear. There were a lot of people in the room. I watched some of it remotely. Is it possible to put a like for engineers?
Yeah. So the good news is there that the microphones, the gooseneck microphones, individually gooseneck microphones, which were ordered nine months ago, are set to be delivered in mid February. And so once that happens, these, these.
So it's O D M mode?
Yes. Yep. They'll all be wireless microphones. I think we, I think we got like nine or 11 of them. Plenty to go around. Yes.
So we put some table podium and we're here.
Sometimes the problem with, with noise, which, or the problem with not being able to hear, which we've been guilty of it here, is if you hit the space bar, incidentally, it mutes the microphone and you don't know right away. So it might be muted for a couple of minutes until somebody registers a message. And for the, for that meeting, there was also, some folks were referring to an incorrect link. And we're in a planning board meeting, so they thought they couldn't hear things, but they were in the wrong meeting and we got them over. So.
So one of the people who talked to me was actually here in person and said it was very difficult to hear from them.
Okay. Yeah. So we have the six speakers in the ceiling. And so when we have that microphone system, it will project at varying levels, the sound from the microphones in the room. So the speakers in the back will be louder and, you know.
Oh, you're a fighter.
Almost 20 centuries.
Hey, listen, you know, if you can get your hands on the stuff, it's pretty sweet.
Almost 20. I thought, hey, didn't realize you had speakers. That's great. Yeah.
Okay. And Vanessa says there was an additional variance that was granted for Michael Point Road on a half acre lot.
That hasn't been built on?
I don't know that it hasn't been built on. My guess is Michael Point Half Acre, it was a setback variance, but if you want details, let me know.
Oh, okay.
You just want to know how fast they drive to get to that half acre. Tell them the variance is approved on the condition that you drive 15 miles an hour below the posted 30 miles an hour. Okay.
Okay. Public comment? Any further public comment? And if you're if you're on meeting, whatever meeting thing is called now, to raise your hand, you're on the telephone, star six. Wait for recognition. I don't see anything.
I don't see anything either.
Nothing. All right. We need a non-public session.
Briefly, yes, we do. That's correct.
Okay. And we have a motion to, thank you very much. Thanks for coming. Drive carefully.
Have a good day.
Thank you. Need a motion to go into a non-public session for reputation. Well, we get a motion to go for the first, first one.
The second.
All those in favor? I'm.
I'm.
We need people.
People.
To close the non-public session, are you sitting in the public session?
Send motion.
I second it.
Hey, Ryan.
Hi.
We're now in, we're, we have just closed the non-public session, it is, whatever time it is, seven forty two, seven forty two. We're now back in public session. What time is the deliberative session?
Nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock on the fourth of February, be our next meeting. There will be a select board meeting after that deliberative session.
Correct.